All right, we've got a good crowd and glad to see each other. One of you. We're here basically just to talk about zoning and rezoning. And Nathan's been working for the past couple of months or longer, I guess. What we want to do is just try to get something that better fits Hamilton. So I'm not going to be answering a whole lot of questions tonight, but we are going to turn it over to Nathan. He's got a program for you. And he'll have, I'll let him handle the agenda, and if we want to take questions afterwards, then what we'll do is we'll let you take the microphone and ask specific questions that he can answer. And if not, we're going to have this, what, Nathan? Probably two or three more after tonight. So every other Monday, two weeks from now, we'll have another public hearing, then we'll probably have a couple more after that. So this is going to be a long process. Not rushing into it, just taking our time, making sure we get something that's going to fit us. So at this time, Nathan, I'll let you talk. You can have the microphone or talk.
Can I have enough without the microphone? Okay, I'll bring the microphone to whoever.
All right, thank you, Nathan. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate the mayor asking me to be here, and I have counsel in the planning commission also invited me over the past four years to be part of their planning and zoning activities. I do appreciate the opportunity. Give you about a 20-second commercial because some folks may not know who I am or the agency that I work for. I'm Nathan Willingham, I'm the Director of Planning and Transportation at the Northwest Alabama Council of Local Governments. We were established originally in 1967, but we were expanded in 1975 to serve Colbert, Lauderdale, Franklin, Marion, and Winston Counties. So we serve a five-county service area. That includes, obviously, five county commissions, but also 32 municipalities, the city of Hamilton. We are pleased to have as one of our member governments. In addition to that 37-member body, we have 20 unelected or appointed officials that are part of the private sector that are representatives on our Board of Directors. Our purpose since the very beginning has been to provide a clearinghouse for community capacity, to provide services to smaller communities that might not otherwise have the resources or the expertise to be able to provide those for themselves. In my particular department, we have regional and community planning, public transportation, and transportation planning. So what we've done there is to fuse together many of the tools that smaller communities, and even some larger ones, might be interested in accessing in order to promote planning and growth in community development. Been asked this evening, and then over the past several months, and over the next six weeks or so, to talk to you all a little bit about the zoning ordinance in the city of Hamilton. The agenda for this evening, pretty basic, includes an introduction to practices of zoning, its characteristics, its purposes, the individuals and the bodies and actors that are involved in it, a little bit of history, and a summary of the issues, as I see them, that face the city of Hamilton in its current zoning ordinance, and then just take questions and comments and talk about the next steps. I'll try to keep my comments pretty brief. And I was joking earlier that I've sat in many a meeting on these particular church pews, and I know how much of a blessing it is when people keep their comments. So, basic characteristics of zoning and zoning ordinances. In a nutshell, zoning is a legislative power. It's derived from the city's police powers to protect public health, safety, and welfare. Every state that allows for municipalities to create their own zoning ordinances has what we call an enabling legislation. This is not something that municipalities can do on their own, but they have to have this power passed down to them by their state governments. In the state of Alabama, Title 11, Subtitle 2, Chapter 52, contains the planning and zoning enabling legislation that allows communities to undertake a zoning ordinance in a zoning matter. I think it's important. Communities can choose whether or not they want to exercise these tools. There's no requirement that's handed down in the state of Alabama, unlike many states, for planning and zoning. Many other places, the state says that in order for a municipality to function well, they are directed or dictated to produce municipal comprehensive plans and zoning ordinances. In the state of Alabama, it's only those entities, those municipalities, that choose to step ahead and utilize these tools, that will use these opportunities to create an overall system for guiding and implementing growth and development for a set of goals and long-term objectives. It's important to note that zoning is not just a tool that stands alone, that is another law that is passed by local municipalities for them to have something to enforce over folks, but it's a tool that is used to fix certain patterns of development in the community that are worthy of being preserved, and to promote certain other development patterns that are part of the long-term future goals and characteristics of the city that you want to have in years to come. As most basic, zoning is the legislative division of a territory into districts that govern things like land use, building size, and basic design elements. It's both a noun, the zoning, that overlays a particular piece of property, as well as a verb, to zone, to rezon. Zoning came out of our concern over growth patterns in the early 19th century. A lot of cities were put together rather poorly in a lot of cases. A lot of homes, a lot of communities were built too close together, they weren't safe from fire, there was pestilence, there was disease, there were basic sanitation concerns. And so the zoning ordinances in these cities in the 19th century came out of these urban problems to protect health and safety. Major concerns at that time were that there was not adequate provision of light and air for the safety of residents, for their health, that buildings were not structurally designed to accommodate the infrastructure that was in place for fire flows and the size of the lines that were in place to be able to reach the tops with the trucks and the equipment that they had. So things like height regulations came about, things like density requirements or restrictions on overcrowding of property came about as traditional uses of zoning. Here's just a list of a few of the important milestones, so to speak. The Colombian Exposition in Chicago in 1893 was one of the premier planned events in the public spaces of the city of Chicago. 26 million people would visit Chicago in the six months that the Colombian Exposition was open. It was designed to celebrate the 200th anniversary of Columbus's discovery of the New World. In planning for that, architects, landscape architects, city planners, city policymakers came together and developed an overall plan for the public spaces that would be used for the exposition. And out of that movement came what was called the City Beautiful Movement, which was an effort to coordinate the resources that were available to cities in the design professions to produce better public spaces, to produce more well-ordered streets, more friendly public spaces, more beautiful cities. About a generation after that, actually, the Department of Commerce, U.S. Department of Commerce, produced a standard zoning enabling legislation. This was a standardized document that was disseminated to each of the 50 states, less than 50 of them, to each of the states in existence at the time. And I always think that it's funny to note that this was actually produced during the Harding Administration, which is not an administration that is known for being unfriendly toward business. At that time, the Department of Commerce saw unchecked growth and rampant unsafe development as one of the things that was keeping business development back in American cities. So they produced and encouraged states to adopt this enabling legislation, which the state of Alabama did, to allow for communities to better plan for the orderly growth of their neighborhood cities and towns, so that they would create a more stable and business-friendly environment. Now naturally, we live in a nation that's governed by laws, and a nation that has its laws governed by a constitution. And one of the main protections of that constitution, obviously, are property rights. In the next court case that's listed, the village of Euclid, the Amber Realty, Amber Realty sued the village, and it went through an appeals process all the way to the Supreme Court to determine whether or not zoning was constitutional, to determine whether or not drawing the line, a boundary on a map, and saying, inside of this boundary, certain things can happen, and inside of this boundary, certain things cannot happen, whether that was constitutional, whether it was an unconstitutional deprivation or taking of somebody's liberty and their rights to draw zoning districts. And in this case, the Supreme Court held that as long as there was an enabling legislation in place, and that as long as a valid public purpose was being pursued, that zoning was a legal tool and a resource that was available to communities to promote health, safety, and welfare. And then finally, 1923, the standard enabling legislation was adopted by the state of Alabama. It's been periodically abridged, updated, and changed. In 1975, we have the enabling legislation that we use today, which I will say has its flaws, but sometimes it's better to have the devil, as you know, than the one that you hope and wide up, wide too. So back to our definition earlier. In the most basic sense, zoning is used to determine the use of property, the activity that actually takes place on that parcel of land, and the design of our communities, how things look, how they function, how they feel, what the feel of a place is. This is derived directly from the 1152-73, which is the section on zoning. And it's a little difficult to see, but this is the language of the enabling legislation. "Zoning can regulate the height and size of buildings and structures, percentage of block that may be occupied, the size of yards and open spaces, and density of population." Stop. In blue, that's the powers that are granted to municipalities to zone for design. Those are the things that a municipality can do to change the design of the community to affect growth and development in the future. Continues, "and the location and use of buildings and land for trade, industry, residence, and other purposes." Stop. That's the grant of authority that a municipality has to control the use of property. In this summary, is all of the authority that a city has in zoning. Inside of this, the city has authority; outside of this, the city has no authority. And this is a very broad grant of authority, but it is legislatively limiting on what the town can do, what a city can do in a zoning ordinance. Why zone? These are all legislative rationales that are included in the zoning legislation. Street congestion, safety from fire, panic, and other disorder, health and safety, general welfare, adequate life and air, overcrowding, undue concentration of populations, and that facilitate adequate provision of transportation, water, sewer, schools, parks, and other resources. So this is what the state has said within the grant of authority, that are the reasons that a town should, could, or should zone. Practically, I know we've all seen this thing before, and it can be many, many locations in the city of Hamilton, of many small towns, even many larger cities across the state of Alabama, across the southeast in the U.S. The reason the zone is to manage growth, because eventually this will come under pressure to become something else. This will come under pressure to become something else, and just from this landscape or this snapshot or photo, it's not easy to tell what the best, highest, and best use of property for this parcel is. You have to look at it, not just in the context of the individual parcel, but also in the context of the overall city. The zoning ordinance can determine what the look and the feel of that parcel is. If it becomes residential, what will its look be? These are just two options, and not even necessarily the best options or the options that are best for the city of Hamilton. But zoning can institute a use standard that says "commercial" and a design standard that says, "build walls in this density, build a more traditional downtown pattern." All of these are possible under zoning. They're not required, they're not restrictions that are handed down by some authority on high, but they are abilities that an ordinance has, that a city has, that if the community stands behind it and says, "this is what we plan to be, this is how we plan to look," that can be implemented, that can be carried forward in a process plan. Say that lacks commercial. Everybody wants more business in their community. Everybody wants more houses in their community, because that's more tax dollars coming in, that's usually more jobs, that's more commerce and activity and opportunity, that's more places to shop, that means more places for recreation, more opportunities for schools. The connection between these developments and City Hall and your local school board is clear, and it's clearly established. So the quality of your commercial opportunities is critical. It's one of the most important things. The quality of your industrial opportunities is critical, because the quality of the jobs that come into your community are determined what the quality of so many of those other things will be. Feel of a commercial district makes a difference. I always tell the story of how I was in the planning commission one evening, and I said, "I don't know if it's something to do with my gender, but I really can't understand why folks of the opposite gender like to shop in certain locations." And the mayor's wife, who was actually a small town, happened to be a member of the planning commission, just stopped me right there and said, "I can't, because it just feels good to be there." Those types of experiences don't grow organically by themselves without some guidance. They don't grow all the time, even with that guidance, but in modern America, they are less likely to materialize without the appropriate incentives and without the appropriate regulatory environment in place at the city level to make them happen. No other level of government, no other body has as much responsibility or ability to impact future growth and development as does a local municipality. Zoning is just one tool in that very deep toolbox that a city has to make these things happen. Again, just another commercial example, this one dealing primarily with parking and screening. Somebody can tell you where to park, how much parking to have, how to lessen the congestion that is caused in streets by having parking of certain designs, and so forth. This is a traditional pattern in foreign America. This is a traditional pattern that you see being revitalized in the city of Hamilton. The automobile gave us this. Our traditional sensibility and mobility patterns of the past gave us downtowns. They're both necessary in a community. They are both absolutely necessary. The scale of development is most different in a downtown area than it is in other commercial areas. It's important that any regulation recognize that the downtown is the community center and a commercial center. The highway is the commercial generator. By and large, the highway has your larger retailers and so forth. And there's this constant tension between the two, and that's just a natural market factor. The only entity that can balance that tension is your city council, and the rules that they put in place and the investments that they make, not just in zoning, but community-wide, in the things that are important, in the things that are planned to be upheld and preserved in the future. And access management, I would add, is usually a very good thing to have on those corridors, because if you have to get out on this central artery to go everywhere, to go to malls, go to the apartments, go to the schools, then you're clogging up this central artery. Whereas if you've got a multitude of options and a dense pattern of development, not every car takes the same route, not every car drives the same road, not every car potentially impedes my trip and your trip, potentially collides with my children and your children. This pattern is an organic pattern. It's a very business-friendly pattern. It's a pattern that sacrifices mobility through traffic, through part of the highways, for a jessis, for being able to get off and get on, and get off and get on. Problem with that is, when you pack a lot of developments on top of each other in that pattern, you sacrifice both. You can't get through, and you can't get off and on, which is why planning and transportation planning emphasizes congestion management, access controls, adequate driveway spacing, and those basic convenience and business-friendly safety features that can make for a better visiting opportunity in those places. It all starts with this. It all starts with what you've got already, because you don't build from the past, you build from the inheritance of the past. So understanding the community, and the way that it has grown, and what is valuable in the community, and what is of worth to preserve in the community, is really the first step of any zoning ordinance, of any planning process. Zoning is just a tool of the overall planning process. Understanding these patterns gives you a basis to build on, to make decisions about what should go in the regulations, what's right for the city of Hamilton's size, what's the best choices to leave school. That ends our first section. I'm really glad to take any questions at this point. I will move on after that to a second section, and then we'll have time for additional questions at the end. So the administration of the zoning ordinance, everybody who's got it, who's involved in it, planning commission, city council, zoning board of adjustments, building inspector, city staff, jump up. Every one of these folks has a role play in this process, in the zoning process. Starting at the bottom, thank you, because without your input, without the feedback that you're willing to give, without the conversation that we're willing to have about what's right to fit the city of Hamilton, we'll get a shoot that doesn't fit, we'll all get blisters. Back up to the top. Under Alabama's enabling legislation, the planning commission has an advisory board. They hear appeals from the public to change things, they hear appeals about map amendments, they hear appeals about changing district boundaries, or about changing the rules that are in the zoning ordinance, and they review those as a citizen planner and think as a nine-member panel, what's right for the city? What would our recommendation be to the council about making the decision? And then they forward that decision onto the council. They act as a rational point of non-political folks to hear the concerns of the community, and they have, your planning commission is heard your concerns, and to pass those on in a recommendation form to the city council, so that the council can exercise its legislative authority and do two things. The city council does two things in this process. Number one, they establish the rules. They set the basic rules for developing property under the zoning ordinance. The text of the ordinance and the initial map, what makes up those rules. Number two, they make decisions about when those rules should be changed. The most frequent decision they make is about changing the boundaries over here, because what the zoning allows isn't what the owner wants for the future, or because what the owner is currently doing is not compatible with what the zoning says. And if the owner's doing something that's not compatible with the zoning, and there's no reason for it, then something's wrong. And that's as simple as you can say. If there's not a reason behind somebody not being able to do what they want to do with their parcel of property that has to do with either existing land use or the plan for the future, then something's wrong. Then it's time to assess whether a change is needed, and the council makes a decision about that change. They set the rules within these district boundaries, and they decide when those boundaries or those rules within those boundaries are the overall, it needs to change. Zoning board of adjustments, charged with three things. They hear what's not a special exception for uses, and we'll get into that just a little bit more in a second. They hear appeals for variances under strict conditions that create an unnecessary hardship on property, strict conditions that create an unnecessary hardship. And then if there is an administrative official who makes a determination, and the person of the general public believes that that determination is incorrect, make an appeal with the zoning board of adjustments. Most of the time, that's if I just read a map, and I insist as a zoning, as an administrative official, I insist that I'm right, the property owner knows that I'm wrong, or they insist that I'm wrong, they can appeal to this board. Of the three of these, there's only one body that's necessary under Alabama's enabling legislation to function, to have a zoning ordinance, and that's the council. You don't have to have the advisory opinion of the planning commission, you don't have to have zoning board adjustments. But the planning commission is on the front end as a citizen advisory board. The council is in the middle as a decision-making authority. The zoning board of adjustments is on the other end as a release valve, so that when the administration of those decisions has questions or concerns about it, it's nine people here, it's your council in the middle, and it's five people on the zoning board of adjustments that are local folks, making decisions about what should and shouldn't happen under what has been adopted. The appeal from there goes to the courts, and once it goes to the courts, it's not anybody's, it's not in anyone's local, not really, not in their purview, not in their realm of influence. So the planning commission is intended to give citizen input, appointed citizen input, to determine what's in the best interest of the community, make a recommendation. The council decides what's in the best interest of the community, and then in the process of those decisions being carried out, the zoning board provides a little bit of a release valve, so that if someone needs some relief from the ordinance, and it's legitimate, it can be granted without having to go through a legal appeals process. And if you look real close, including the building inspector, which is often the zoning enforcement officer for most small towns, they decide what is in accordance with the ordinance and what is not in accordance with the ordinance. If you look real close at those, you can see three branches of government. You've got an administrative branch, and a planning commission, and a building inspector. These are both executive decision-making administration, the law's already been passed, this is how it's going to be carried out, out of decisions. City council is clearly the legislative body. And the zoning board acts as a quasi-judicial body. It hears official appeals and passes judgment on the relationship between an applicant who's engaged in a zoning matter and the city before it gets to the courts. The next step is the courts. If you're a scholar or even interested at all in American government, this is a microcosm of American government being carried out, because three branches of the government are interacting with one another to carry out policy and to get things done in an environment. And it's reasonably effective, because it's local. Now, carry it up a couple levels and ask that question again. Then there are, of course, folks like myself, I think I see Scott right here somewhere, city attorney, folks that offer expert opinions. I will not relay many of the colorful anecdotes I've heard about experts. I have unfortunately had to accept the fact that I might be one, however. But there are folks that are brought on by the city and are asked to provide expert opinion from outside, because they see these things in other locations, or they maybe have written a few of them, or have been on some pretty heated phone calls in the past. And our role in this is just to give the best advice that we can, and to offer that advice professionally, and unbiased, and ethically, and to help guide whatever decision-makers through the decision-making process in accordance with what their desires are, what their conscience is, so to speak, what the community's sense of its own best interests are. And again, in an unbiased and ethical way. And again, briefly back to John Pope, none of this happens without conflict. Not a bit of it happens without conflict. But that conflict is minimized when folks are given an opportunity to express themselves on the front end, before things get to a point that is so contentious and so heated, and before it becomes a, not a literal shooting match, but a competition with heated interests on either side. You set the rules with deliberation on the front end, and give folks an opportunity to have their opinions heard, we can try to come around to some consensus. And that's another element that's often missing, that we're going to evolve, is consensus. You get asked quite often, what happens in adopting and amending the ordinance? Well, planning commission is established with appropriate membership, and they develop a zoning plan. They recommend that zoning plan. Usually it's done in accordance with some kind of comprehensive plan for the future. Then there's an advertising process, public hearing itself, and the council makes a decision about it. There is a legislatively mandated process for amending the ordinance, and it requires that amendment on 22 days, and if the meetings don't line up, then things tend to stretch on. But the state has said that zoning is an issue with enough potential problems involved in it, because it deals with our basic fundamental adjustments to what we can and can't do with our property, that any change to it has to have enough notice for people to give their opinions out. And so we have to put it in the paper in full, and we have to put it in the paper again in summary, and then we have to wait a certain number of days and have a public hearing. And that theoretically gives everyone time enough to be heard, by the way. So that when the council does make a decision, they have the citizen advisory body giving them input as to what's best for the community, and then they have an opportunity for the general public to be involved, to give them and I, to give their opinion, individuals' opinions, in a medium of public hearing such as this, as to what should happen. And then they can make their decision, knowing that they've gotten that information, that feedback from both sides. We've covered much of this enforcement administration, there's zoning officer. There's zoning officer, usually it's your building inspector, that's the person that you go to, that sits across the desk, that says, this is what the zoning board says, here's the form that you need to fill out, they guide you through the process. Planning commission advises the council. Zoning board, again, administrative appeals, pretty straightforward. If an administrative officer of the city is felt to have made a mistake, then an individual can appeal to the zoning board and get a judgment there. Special exceptions are parts of the ordinance that allow for certain uses, but only under certain conditions. They're sometimes called conditional uses. Two classifications of uses exist. One is a use that's permitted by right. That means if I want to do it, I go to the zoning compliance officer, and I ask them for a zoning permit, and then I talk to the building inspector, and get the building licenses, that other part of the code that's unrelated, that's not part of the zoning ordinance, I get all that taken care of. And all that I need is to come in and fill out, you know, one piece of paperwork and the other piece of paperwork, to get the ball rolling. But I can do that by right. I don't have to go to the zoning board of adjustments, or the city council, or anybody else. I can come to city hall and determine whether or not I can do that thing that I want. Classic example being building a house in a district that's zoned for R1 single-family. If I want to build a house in an R1 district, and single-family housing is permitted by right, I just come right in and get my permits, and I walk out the door. Second use is conditional use or special exception. These are uses that are generally allowed and encouraged, really, in a certain zoning district, but there might be conditions, there might be things that that owner or that developer needs to do in order to mitigate some off-site problems potentially. Classic example that I always use, and I'm sure some have heard it before, is the daycare in a residential district. It's not a bad thing to have, and certainly no one wants to necessarily bar daycares from residential districts, but you've got to make sure that they're got adequate parking. You've got to make sure that during the times that they're going to be carrying kids to and from daycare, you can get your kids to and from school safe, that cars aren't sprawled out in the street, that they aren't operating all hours of the day and night, that they have the proper permitting in order, and things of that nature. So that might be a special exception, where the zoning board of adjustments will come in and say, put in a circle drive, make sure that you've got plenty of cars stacking in that driveway, so that you don't block the street adjacent to it, and yes, you can do this. And then they guide that process. And then finally, the city council adopts, amends the ordinance in the zoning now, spoke about earlier. Here's just a list of common concerns. These aren't necessarily the ones that are in place in Hamilton, but we've talked about it. Property rights. Everyone has the right to retain their property and retain reasonable use of their property. A city can't come in and bar somebody from all uses of their property. They can't come in and say, this property is zoned for this use, and it's not zoned for that use. Exclusionary zoning. An exclusionary zoning ordinance is one that bars a use completely. It says that there will be no manufactured housing in this community. That's not legal. It's not legal, and it's not right. And the reason it's not legal, and the reason it's not right, is because manufactured housing represents a significant portion of the lower-income housing across the nation. And to bar it completely from a community is very, very much discriminatory against a class of individuals based on economic interests. There are some things that can be zoned out because their impact is very heavy, because their impact will be so great that it would cause community-wide negative effects. Commercial agricultural farming operations are a common concern. Regulations that cover chicken houses and pig feeding lots. There are ordinances that exclude those because of the noxious effects, because of the smell that comes out to adjacent properties. Now, if they exist, if they exist already and the zoning ordinance is passed, they can continue, because there's a vested interest in those properties. They can continue under reasonable non-conforming use standards, but you can't establish any new ones after they're zoned out, so to speak. Of course, everyone often complains, I've yet to see a government process that was simple. Zoning is a complicated process, and it takes a significant investment of time, it takes a significant investment of resources on the part of the city to understand and to gain the capacity to enforce. And it takes a significant amount of effort on the part of an individual, a citizen, to navigate what is an unfamiliar government process much of the time. And we want to minimize that complication as much as possible. We're never going to have it as simple as I would like to see it, or as simple as the average resident of the city would like to see it, because there are bureaucratic processes that have to take place, there are time constraints that have to be, that have to be met, there are advertisements that have to be made, and so forth. And then finally, cookie cutter, I put this on here for two reasons. One is that a lot of communities are really concerned that their zoning ordinance is producing cookie cutter communities, that every house looks just like every other house, that every neighborhood looks just like every other neighborhood, that there's not any diversity, or that all houses are of the same quality or cost, there's no diversity in the community. A lot of communities, residents in a lot of communities have concerns that their ordinances and their market forces are producing neighborhood products, market products, that aren't like they were in the past, that aren't affordable, or that are too affordable, shall we say? And so they have those concerns. And then, I also put this up because the zoning ordinance for the city of Hamilton shouldn't be just like everybody else's zoning ordinance across the southeast, across the state of Alabama, or northwest Alabama. It should be the ordinance that does the things that the city of Hamilton collectively wishes to accomplish, and organize the planned manner going forward. So it needs to be an interactive process with a lot of input, with a lot of public interaction, with a lot of conversations taking place behind the scenes with the planning commission, and with the administrators of the ordinance, talking about what's working, what's not working. Where are the areas, when you're saying multi-million dollar investment, talk about enshrining the value of an area, a zoning ordinance can protect that investment going forward, along with many other tools. But what are the areas that have value to the communities that need to be protected? What types of development needs to be encouraged? And where does it need to be encouraged? Where is it most appropriate? Where is the infrastructure sufficient for industrial and jobs? Where is it not sufficient? Where would they be a bad neighbor? Those are all questions that have to be resolved in some kind of interactive forum, and can only be resolved at the local level. Limitations, we talked a bit about this. U.S. and Alabama constitutions impose strict limitations on what we can and can't do. Those limitations are tried time and again by case law, and we can only operate within the boundaries of the enabling legislation that's been provided to us by the state of This ordinance should reflect a consensus of ideas. That means that no one party is completely happy with it. But no one is so dissatisfied with it that they're afraid it is not giving them some benefit. And that benefit can come from protecting existing investment, that benefit can come from promoting future growth and development, promoting beneficial patterns of growth and development, from preventing congestion, from ensuring that areas that are put aside for jobs can actually be used for jobs without multi-million dollar additional investments. By compounding the benefits that are had by other public investments and things like water, sewer, streets, it's harder and harder nowadays to build new infrastructure to support development. Public finance is in a very, very difficult place nowadays. And so it's very difficult to reinvest in areas. And so if the initial investment that's made with public dollars is not preserved, and is not developed in orderly fashion to a degree or to the benefit that the public desires, you're probably not going to get a chance to build that interstate down there again. The interchanges on that interstate are not going to come about again. It's a once-in-a-lifetime, it's a once-in-a-multiple-lifetime opportunity to promote Hamilton. And that's just one area where a large amount of public infrastructure has been put, a very visible new amount of public infrastructure has been placed, that is of value to the citizens, to the residents, not just Hamilton, but the region, the county, the entire region. And preparing those areas to receive growth using a zoning ordinance, amongst other tools, investment strategies, public investment strategies, promotional activities, marketing, and so forth, those are all tools that collectively can work together in a planned environment to bring in the kind of jobs that are deserving of the level of investment that the public has made in this area over the last few years. And we're glad to see it happen, we're very, very happy to see it happen. Okay, I won't try to touch on all these, but there's a lot of stuff that zoning can do, that relate to planning and property values, and reducing the cost of public facilities and so forth. There's a lot of things it can't. It is not a silver bullet, it does not act alone. It acts in concert with long-term planning, with public investment and infrastructure, with public information processes. It's not a short-term fix. If something exists already, it's grandfathered. It takes a long time for property to change use, to change development package. Only consistent application of zoning principles over time will take a potentially less productive land use, respect the vested interests of the owner of that property, and continually what is an existing or grandfathered use on that property, and carry it forward into the future in a means that will redevelop into something that is in accordance with long-term being planned. One thing I will note on here, C10 back there, zoning is not, this has nothing to do with your building codes. This has nothing to do with the structural soundness. Nothing in the enabling legislation tells someone how to construct in a structurally sound fashion. That's another grant of authority that the city has. That's another grant of authority under police powers, and it's another process, and it's another complicated one. But it's important to realize that all these tools, first, that they all work together, and two, that they are conceptually distinct, legislatively distinct. It may be the same official that you have to deal with in both, but the value of one is not completely tied up in the value of the other. However, the value of both is greatly improved by having them as available resources to improve quality of growth and development. Again, zoning should be viewed as a tool for long-term growth and development process to reach out in multiple directions and get feedback, and interpretations of what the community character should be, and what the long-term growth strategy for the community is. Should not avoid public discussions. It should not try to be done behind closed doors or outside the life of public processes, public involvement processes. Shouldn't attempt to envelop an overly broad range of activities, use and design, those are the two areas, they're broad areas, but that's what zoning can do. It can govern use, and it can govern design. Other tools are available for broader areas, but under zoning, use and design are the only things that are out there available. And then finally, everybody's had one, may have occasion, on occasion been one. Zoning will solve problems with not liking your neighbor. Good fences make good neighbors. Good zoning can help tell you where to put that fence, when it's required, when it's not, but personal issues between folks aren't resolved through these kinds of processes. Long-term government and community development is the goal of zoning. Gloss over this, because we're talking a little bit slower. Okay, Hamilton's zoning ordinance, this is the beginning of part two. It was adopted in 2010, it's been amended about 19 times, I think there are only two text amendments and 17 map amendments. You can see, most of the adjustments have been made, have been to the boundaries that are shown on the zoning board. Less than five of the requests that have been submitted, officially submitted through formal processes, have been rejected. So generally, the planning commission, the major recommendations of the council, has followed through on. In 19 out of about 24 or so total times, they've said, I think there's anything wrong with that. We recommend that the council proceed with it. So the administration of the ordinance has worked its way out favorably to the applicant in the vast majority of times. The majority of these requests have addressed non-conforming uses, places where the map says that you can't do something that existed before the ordinance was adopted, or manufactured I want to read through all these, I can make this presentation available, but the structure and content of the ordinance contains a whole lot of stuff. Whole lot of legal provisions going into the zoning ordinance, and I apologize for the size of this, but you've got legal status provisions, you've got the sections that adopt the zoning map, you've got a lot of zoning districts, you've got five residential districts in Hamilton. Now, one question I have is, do you have five distinctive neighborhood types in Hamilton? If you did, great, you need five residential districts. But if you don't have five distinctive residential neighborhood types, you don't necessarily need five different residential districts. You've got a flood district that is subsumed, or that is enforced by separate flood ordinance. You've got flood ordinance already in existence. It's separate, it's adopted by council. Two industrial districts make perfect sense, a planned unit of development, there's some zero logic line developments in there. I mean, the ordinance does everything that a typical ordinance does. It establishes definitions for how the ordinance is going to be, how terms in the ordinance are going to be defined, it establishes a process, reinforcement, administration, talks about non-conforming uses. But quite honestly, it's not been discussed outside of the planning commission and the city council. So there's a lot in here. And so the issues really come back to three or four, I think there's five on here, main things. There are unused provisions in your zoning ordinance. I bet you didn't know that. Well, why would you, if you don't use them? There's not a reason to have them in there. These are laws that are on the books that are not being enforced. They're not hurting anybody. I mean, really, if you don't know they exist, and you don't know that the lack of enforcement of them is causing you harm, then it's not, probably not causing you a lot of harm. Flood planning, airport, there's a professional district that, this is a place just for offices. I don't know that there's a place just for offices in Hamilton. I'm not the person to answer that, but in my conversations with elected officials, appointed officials, they've indicated that there may not be a place, a district that is right just for offices, professional offices in Hamilton. But there's probably a district that's good for professional offices, and stores, and retail, and things of that nature. In fact, there's probably two of them. And the major difference between them is their age and the design characteristics of them, one of them being downtown, no one being general commercial areas. Sign ordinance, landscaping, things that haven't really been brought up a whole lot in the course of enforcing the ordinance, things that haven't been emphasized a lot, and that have not really been used. One concern that I've heard quite often is that if you go back to, I don't have the map in front of me, but if you go back to that land use map that I had up there, there are large areas that are green. And when you code green in planet speak, that means it's agricultural, forestry, open natural space. Lots of open space, lots of green on the map, that represents farming, agriculture, and forestry. And currently, all of that is zoned R1, residential, there's not an agricultural district. And that may be an oversight. That may be something that we need to address going forward, and it is zoning ordinance. Told you, lots of green. Non-conforming uses in general, what do we do when something is not zoned the way that it is being used? How long should somebody be able to discontinue a use and come back and reestablish that use? What's fair? Should somebody be able to reestablish a use after the building is destroyed? We've seen that buildings can be destroyed, and that's particularly common. It happens, and it's a tragedy when it does. But the rules that are set in here set the baseline for day-to-day situations. Emergency situations are completely different now. But the day-to-day situations of property maintenance and mobile home removal, and things of that nature, are set by this ordinance, and we're trying to work through issues of fairness in Hamilton. And then finally, these last two deal entirely with manufactured home. We jokingly have said, I don't know, maybe seriously, that most of the issues that we've had come to the planning commission that were of any controversy at all, dealt with manufactured housing. When the majority of issues of any controversy are of one subject, we need to take a look at that subject. We may come to conclude that exactly what we've been doing is exactly what we ought to do going forward, that those controversies were all growing pains, that are just part of going through growth and change, and changing government regulation, and setting ourselves up for a better growth and development in the future. We may determine, as part of this process, and part of the city governance process, the zoning process, adoption, evaluation... zoning process, adoption evaluation process, that, hey, we're right along. But it behooves us to take a step back, take a look at these things, because manufactured housing is an important part of the housing in this community. I will go out on a limb and say that most folks don't oppose manufactured housing except in certain coherent, primarily single-family housing areas and along certain corridors where you're concerned about commercial opportunities in the future. And that by and large, the planning commission at least, has been supportive of manufactured housing in more rural or less cohesively developed, integrated neighborhoods. When I say that, if you can look around and you don't see one, then you may be in a neighborhood that has a coherent development pattern that is site-built, single-family housing. If you're in an area that is mixed in development pattern, well, that's an area that probably, depending on the long-term plans, can go your way. And so those are the kinds of decisions that we have to make about what the content of the ordinance is going forward and about what's fair in the treatment of those areas. Because again, I'll go back to, out on my limb and say, I don't think most folks have had a problem, the planning commission certainly has not, in the majority of requests in areas that were not within densely developed, existing, site-built residential neighborhoods. And then we've had some questions about non-conforming manufactured housing. What's fair as far as moving an old one out and moving a new one in? Under the current ordinance, you can't move an old manufactured home out. That may be correct. It may be the best thing. It may be appropriate to do that. But I think that by minimizing the amount of non-conformity, in other words, allowing these, and this is my sense from conversations past, allowing manufactured homes in most areas that are primarily rural or are already mixed in their housing type, that administratively there will be a lot less controversy with respect to when somebody can move one in, when somebody can move one out, what the rules say as far as the preservation and the ease with which they can be put in place. Okay, so now I'm serious, questions and comments. I know we've had two question periods that we kind of skipped. And I probably owe my time. Take this to the back. I'm afraid.
Hello? There it is. Okay, I'm Jack Franklin. I just want to have a clarification on a point. You said this zoning, what we're doing now, has nothing to do with the building code. Did I understand you to say that?
Yes.
Okay. But the person that's doing the inspection for the zoning, the building inspector, would be also involved with the building code.
I'll try to answer without screaming at anybody's ear. Right now, as the zoning ordinance has written, the building inspector is your zoning officer in the city of Hamilton. In practice, however, you have a separate zoning officer. Marla Shaw has been acting as the zoning administrator for the city of Hamilton. One of the changes that we predict will come forward in a new draft of the ordinance is to specify that there is a separate zoning officer for the city of Hamilton, and that authority can be vested in the building inspector, for example, or in another city employee who would be, I would say, blessed with the opportunity of administering the zoning ordinance. But as ordinances, they are two distinctive and separate ordinances, and they are derived from separate grants of authority that are, come from state legislation.
And second part of that question, a building inspector is a requirement on both sides, on the zoning side and the building code side. Without the building inspector, you cannot enforce either one, can you?
I'll speak to the zoning ordinance because I don't claim expertise in building code. The zoning ordinance has to be enforced by someone, and the city council has the authority to name the enforcing or administering official within the ordinance itself, within the text of the ordinance, which is the law itself. The city council can name whomever they wish as the administrator. Any volunteers?
I've got a couple of questions. You said on grandfather, on grandfathered, any business is owned right now or will or not?
If it is a legally established business, and there are some checkpoints in that, if it is a legally established business, then yes, it's grandfathered. If it was operating in, under, one of...
Should it not have been put on that map? Because what it was, if it was a business, when y'all did that map, should it not have been put on that map? It's a business.
The intent of the ordinance, yes. The intent of the zoning ordinance is to minimize the non-conformity as much as possible.
Then you discussed this, I come from the first meeting y'all had when y'all developed it. I submitted eight applications. I've never heard a response back on it yet. And you and one of the guys that designed it was on the committee that told me that y'all would come out and look at my situation, and nobody ever come out and looked at it? Do you remember that?
Yeah, at the time that those were requested, the zoning map had not been, there was initial update to the zoning map. It had not been updated. All of those requests were taken to the planning commission and they were reviewed, and then the planning commission's recommendation was incorporated into the map at the time that it was readopted.
If council made the decision, we thought the may have a meeting and a hearing, and people vote on it, then they, I had some property that was took out this evening, the council voted on it, they made a decision, it was okay. Nobody notified me. Two weeks later, I was reading the paper that my land had been put back in. I had nothing, you know, nobody notified me or anybody. Is that legal?
Again, the annexation process is actually a little bit outside of the bounds of what we're here discussing because it is a separate authority the city has outside of zoning.
Who makes the decision? Who's on these boards? Does the council, four of these people that's on the boards that make the decision?
Yes.
The meeting I come to, the people that was on it, I mean, I'm not hiding you, like they piled together around on the table, sneaking around, saying, you know, do this or do that. One of them called me that night, and I got home and said, you know, I'm getting off, and if it's going to be going like this, I don't want to be a part of it. And, you know, that's what concerns me and the people here. I feel like most of them here is just wanting to be treated fairly, you know, equal. And, you know, what are our rights? Who decides? You know, do we have any decision as far as voting on these people that's on these boards? Or do they just pick somebody that they want, that they feel like can control it like they wanted, or how are y'all going to do that? I mean, I'm just asking.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I agree entirely. I'm going to walk up here and dress, and if I have to come back and invite somebody else, I will. First off, I'll say that any concerns over fairness and due process are entirely warranted, entirely. So to address your question directly, the planning commission is made up of nine members, five of those are appointed by the mayor, the mayor himself serves on it, there's an administrative official of the city that serves on it, and then there's a council person that serves on it. Six members appointed by the mayor, or my math is wrong, but there are nine members, six of them are appointed by the mayor, and then there's a representative of the council that the council chooses, the mayor serves on the planning commission, and then an administrative official of the city also serves on the planning commission. And those appointments are, there is one selective appointment that's done by the city council, and then the rest of them are done by the mayor.
Should we, should I still have to pay that $300 even though I've done so many of those eight applications to do it again? I mean, I was told when I wanted to submit them the second time that I was going to have to pay a fee. I mean, the first time we did, and I never got a response on the first date, so should I have to pay that penalty the second time because it wasn't my fault?
Well, the first date, there was no fee associated earlier in the zoning process when we were first updating the map. There was an initial map that we realized had many non-conforming properties on it. We requested at that time, under that ordinance structure, that those who had concerns about those non-conforming properties present them to the planning commission, and the planning commission then did review them and incorporated their recommendations into a draft zoning map that was then adopted by the city council. So we essentially replaced an old map based on recommendations of the planning commission with a new map that was more accurate, but that reviewed all of those requests individually. Subsequent to that, the council voted to put in place a fee, and I can't speak to the amount off the top of my head, but they did vote to put in place a fee for rezoning requests because there is a cost associated with that. There's time involved on the part of administrative officials, and then the major cost is in the publication of the ordinance. The entire text of any ordinance to be reviewed by the council has to be sent to the paper and published in full one time and then published in a synopsis and notes. So that fee was put in place to offset or defer the cost to the city in those requests.
So if you make that request, do you get it responded to an answer? Then should you have, do we have a time period that we should wait before we can start our process to see if they're going to come back and vote again on it? Or what's the decision, what's the step that's going to be made?
Okay, if a request is made, there's a form you fill out at City Hall. It's a zoning request form, and it says, gives enough information to review the parcel, location information, property information, if you got parcel data, so we can look and see, make sure we know where we're going, we go out there and stand there and look at it and what's around it. And then it asks for what the existing zoning is and the existing use and then the proposed zoning and the proposed use, so that we can thoroughly evaluate and so the planning commission can take a look at that and can make a recommendation to the council. The planning commission looks it over, makes a recommendation to the council. At that time, it's published, the recommendation's put into ordinance form and it's published once in full, and then a week later, it's published in a synopsis form, and then 15 days after that, there's a public hearing itself, and it's announced in the paper when the public hearing's going to be. And then generally, it's placed on council's agenda that evening after the public hearing. If the council chooses, it can act on it that night. If not, it will be held over until the next council meeting two weeks later. So you can see there's a pretty lengthy process. If all the dates line up, it's a minimum of 22 days just by the legislative publication requirements, and then it can be up to seven days after that that the council actually takes action on it.
I'd really, I want to go, on the one I had, they give me an answer, then a month later, they made a different decision. I just didn't know if that was something that was going to face, you know, in time to come. And if you're non-compliant, like your first grandfather then, you don't have to worry about that anymore, do you?
If you're grandfathered then, then you can retain use of the property in that use, unless you discontinue it. In other words, unless you abandon the use, then it has to come back in conformity, or unless it is damaged or destroyed greater than 50% of its assessed value or its appraised value.
Because, I mean, I'm in a situation, I have my insurance, because when y'all first started this, I'm paying a higher insurance rate because they told me that I was on, I've been in business way before this ever started, as a concrete plant during 1962, so it was a commercial property when I bought it. I've got a commercial appraisal on it. But I'm running up on a situation since this has started, I'm paying higher insurance because they told me that I couldn't build it back if it blow the budget. And my insurance finally read, I brought it down to the bottom of the market, and if it's destroyed, I have to build back the same property, or I only get a certain percent of my insurance.
I can't address the insurance.
I'm in the same boat.
I can't address the insurance premiums of their practices, but I can say that you are correct as far as how the ordinance and the non-conforming use restrictions in the ordinance would be enforced if you have a non-conforming use. I'll get to you in just one second, jumping up a little bit closer to the...
The one, you didn't answer Steve's question about the fee, because he had filed one prior to that amendment.
A decision was made on that request at the time that the map was readopted then. A subsequent request for rezoning would be required to pay a fee.
I never got a answer. You yourself was supposed to come out and look at it with very mixed, very caught and resigned, but y'all never gave me an answer on any of those requests that I submitted that night. I was asked to leave the meeting because I knew more about it than they did, and they was embarrassed. I mean, you were there. I mean, I'm not hiding anything, but, you know, I shouldn't be penalized for something that y'all did.
And I apologize for any part that we had in not following up with you or for any misinformation that goes back to my original statement. You have the right to feel as if you were treated fairly and were given due process and all this, and that your request was heard. And I can tell you that it was heard, that it was reviewed by the planning commission. They didn't put it into a single ordinance form because there were so many of them at that time, so they incorporated them into a single, I'm sorry, they didn't put it into ordinances for every request because there were so many of them. They incorporated it into one ordinance that readopted the entire map.
Okay, if I've got a business like that, I want to order, I want to get a license to do an office or something in that business, then you're stating, but it's not zoned, but that I can't get.
As long as you extend the footprint, you can continue operating within the footprint of that business, and you should be able to pull a building permit for that.
We're operating a business right now that's zoned residential. The city is, and they're releasing a license to any vehicles to operate it. How can they do that if we can't?
I'm not familiar with the parcel in this scenario.
Francis Holloway Headings. I have a lot over in Oak Hill Circle. And Mr. Sanderson, I don't know when the zoning or the kind of papers were drawn up. We bought the land in the 70s when the first subdivision. Well, I cannot sell my property because most people want to put a mobile home in. And I understand there's more modern module homes and things that could be restricted to put on that piece of property. But there's a Gans Slip on the right and a rental house on the left. And I have had several inquiries about it, but they want to put a manufacturer home. And I'm, so I did not know that that restriction was there until 2000 and something. And I went to a lawyer and he showed me a copy of the zoning that Mr. Sanderson put in that subdivision. So now it's all the subdivisions in Hamilton restricted to manufacturing homes.
I'll address this in terms of the existing ordinance as well as what we hope to do with revision. Right now, manufactured homes are not allowed on individual lots unless it's an R4 residential So if it is zoned anything other than R4, then no, it would not be allowed.
The city talking about is an Oak Hill subdivision, they have their own restrictive council.
There is a covenant in that subdivision.
Oh, okay. Well, let me address the question. Are you asking about restrictive covenants that are deed restrictions?
I don't know what you mean.
Okay. There's zoning, and that's a law that the city passes? And then there are restrictive covenants, which is a lot of times when a property owner doesn't have zoning protections, they'll put restrictive covenants in place. That's something that is on the deed, that a property owner, when they purchase the property, they agree to abide by those. That's not a law per se. And I'm not familiar with the parcel and question. I'd be glad to try to clarify any additional questions that you might have. But as to the zoning ordinance, right now, if it's not zoned R4, it can't, R4 or as a manufactured home.
It's R4. It's on the board.
I would have to get more information about the location of the parcel.
When that subdivision was built, there was a covenant in that subdivision. That subdivision did have a covenant established in it when it was built, I had to build some of those houses in there. And that covenant will be described in your deed itself. There should be an attachment to your deed that will give the restrictions upon that property. And that doesn't have anything to do with the city that's put in there by the land.
Well, he contracts the building. Well, he contracted the buildings. He told me he didn't have the land. I mean, you know, he contracted building the houses, because we live in Illinois and it, and my husband's deceased. And I've been trying to sell it.
Look, look at your deed though, and it would explain too.
And if, if you need assistance with that, I'm sure that we can provide someone that will, will help.
Well, I've been to a lawyer and I saw a paper. So, did he tell you about the covenant? No, no.
He, he didn't mention the zoning ordinance though, right? The zoning ordinance was passed in two thousand nine, that's when that restriction was imposed.
Was when?
Two thousand nine was when it was originally passed.
Well, I would argue in the seventies.
And, and the new, the new zoning law for the city of Hamilton was passed and came into effect in two thousand nine.
Just how does the ADA, are you applying, or how are you applying ADA to this zoning ordinance?
Zoning ordinances interface more often with private development than they did public developments.
Well, that's still covered. Your buildings, your, your business part of it, building parking lots, size, trucks, you know.
Right. And, and those, those aspects are, are, they are constructed by private developers. The zoning ordinance does not regulate any accessibility.
It doesn't regulate parking of any kind or?
It regulates the number and dimensions of parking spaces.
ADA does also.
And, and we will check to make sure that we're complying. That's a very good point, thank you.
Excuse me, third, nothing like this lady was actually looking.
First in. Or Jeffrey. I don't think I need the microphone. What I was wondering is if the majority of the council think, and, you know, as you pointed out, that each individual property owner has a right to do with his property, what he wills, what have a zoning ordinance, if you're going to be able to just fill out a paper, come in and get it, you know?
I'll get a little more, so I'll use the microphone. Yeah, I may have misspoken. If, if the council feels that everyone should be able to do with their property as they wish, you're right, there is no, no reason for the zoning ordinance. But if the council and citizens, in some consensus, embrace the tool of zoning as a way to preserve neighborhood character and to promote certain patterns of development, then the zoning ordinance can be a tool that is useful in those things. At the, at its core, the zoning ordinance and the philosophy of zoning sort of recognizes that individual folks can have an impact on the larger community if that can be negative to more than just themselves. A classic example is, as I referred to earlier, the CAFO, commercial feed operation. Those are things that can really affect everybody when they come to town. Landfills are another one. And clear waste, there, there have been many, many fights over those sorts of things. Many, many of these issues are, of course, regulated, they have other levels of government. But there, as a longstanding tradition in zoning, that the police power grants the city the authority, and if they choose to exercise it, the responsibility to govern those things, those aspects of growth and development that have an impact on the public or the general public, and on health, safety, welfare, and even general, points of general convenience.
And there's not a limit as to what area has to be reclassified? I mean, you can come in and just, you know, pick a half acre and that, that little spot is?
Yeah, as long as, and, and it's a complicated issue when you discuss rezoning a small area or a single lot. But in general, as long as you're doing, you're, you're making your zoning decisions in accordance with, with a plan for growth and development, or you are taking precautions to make sure that you're not treating one property owner any differently than we treat a similarly situated property owner, then, then yes, you can rezonate a single parcel of property. To that end, one of the things that we would like to do in the, in the zoning update is to create districts that do not require us to rezone as many individual spots of land for things like business or things like manufactured housing. We hope to take care of those, as, as many of those as possible by referring back to this map, which is the, the patterns of existing development, and identifying the areas that are currently acceptable for business and for manufactured homes and for single-family residences, and determining which neighborhoods have the pattern, the development pattern to constitute neighborhoods with a definable character that needs to be zoned in a certain way so that that character continues in the future.
One other thing. I know that all, everything is supposed to be published in the paper, but if you don't take the paper, you, you know.
Yeah, and, and, and I, I said earlier, our, our enabling legislation goes back to nineteen seventy-five. And there's a lot of things that, that, a lot of things in it that were not contemplated as they are today. And one of the flaws, I think, is that there are no higher standards for publication than, than the newspaper publication. And in fact, I think the newspaper publication may be a flaw in and of itself because of its expense, and there are less expensive and more convenient ways to get the information out there. Except that, a lot of people do get the paper, and a summary that directs you to a full insertion somewhere else, or, or something of that nature. But the reason that it's so developed and the city only does the minimum, then they have a record treating one person one way because it's advantageous, and they're treating another property owner another way because it's less advantageous. So set the standard, the city can set a higher standard, just as big, consistent higher standard if they choose to.
I did try to, just to address some of that as far as this particular, I was so wide-ranging and thanked so many people that I, I immediately began what we assume will be the date of publication, wasn't it delayed? I even noticed in the article, I put the date that it will be in there, hopefully that, you know, we'll get more, more than usual widespread, probably should bring that be in the paper. Never having be some other avenues, we understand, the city website or things like that. I, I had the same idea, let's start publicizing the date so that people know the bands, we're looking for it.
And we appreciate the coverage. You always know the job, sir.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I have a double lot on my property, but it's old, I'd like to rip it out. Can I replace it or another one?
Depends on the zoning. So I won't have to yell. Depends on the zoning of the property. If it's a nonconforming double lot right now, in, under the zoning ordinance of the city of Hamilton, you can't. You can't tear it out and replace it. So, so it's in anything but an R4 zone or a manufactured housing, right now, you cannot. And that's an issue. That's an issue that, that, that we want to contemplate. And, and the best solution for that is to find the areas that manufactured housing is entirely appropriate, and track those areas down, and define them and delimit them on the zoning map, so that owners don't have this nonconforming issue, they don't have this nonconforming status. They have the security of knowing that their parcel, their development, if it is, if it is in the area that the planning commission, the council feels is appropriate for manufactured housing. Again, looking at the track record, that's a lot of area. But if it is in an area that the council feels is appropriate for manufactured housing, they have the protections of being there by right, not the limitation of being there under a nonconforming grandfather vested interest clause.
I'll get my, I was going to ask you, is, is this your thinking about like, we'll just take, uh, Robert Davis Drive, are you talking about doing the whole drive all the way through the street? Would that be like a mobile home zone for some other street? We talking about doing a whole street this time, not just plotting it out?
We're contemplating several options. The ordinance that you have now is one step down from the most restrictive ordinance that exists. And I say it's one step down because I think the most restrictive ordinance that exists requires manufactured housing to be in mobile home parks. The ordinance that you have now has a district, R4 district. What we're looking to do is to identify the areas that, in draft form, and, and this, this is actually a question as much as anything, hoping for some public comment. What we're hoping to do is identify the areas that, if you look around, you see mostly are all single-family housing. And the areas that are planned so that if you look around in the future, you want to see mostly are all single-family housing. And give those the protections of a single-family district while allowing manufactured housing in other residential districts. So, the long and the short of it is, if, if that street is of a mixed character now, then it should be set to receive manufactured homes after this revision. If it is of primarily or entirely a single-family character now, then it should fall under a single-family zoning district going forward.
That's the way it ought to be set up to start with. I mean, somebody over there got in an automobile, drove over this town, said this town over here would run down, and it needs this, or that, over here don't need a mobile home there. That's the way it ought to be done instead of the way it was done from sitting in an office and drawing papers.
This map reflects, this map here, this is the existing map, land use map, it reflects the efforts of, of our staff to go parcel by parcel and identify those areas. And it is the foundation of what we're doing. I agree with you entirely.
This, this council here, I'll have to say, been great. But if we look at that just as an idea or something from the, if you've got an area like that, looks to me like, as long as you're putting, the way to make that decision, if you're putting something in there of equal value or greater, then I don't see a problem with it. I mean, if you're putting something to downgrade the property, I can understand. But if it's in an area where all the houses are twenty-five, thirty thousand dollar houses, you ought to be able to, as long as you're putting something in there of equal value or greater, the neighbors shouldn't have any complaints. If you're building a thirty thousand dollar house beside a twenty-five thousand dollar house, I don't see why you ought to have to come before a committee and have somebody to vote on it.
Amen.
You know what I'm saying? Because right now, the way it is, if they have these hearings and all the neighbors don't like it, we just had a situation on Robert Davis up there like that. If one neighbor don't let that mobile home back in there, then that pressures the council to make a decision. If they've got four friends on that subdivision over there, then that's going, have that council that want to say, hey, we can't do that.
I won't speak to that. I won't speak to that. Process, politics, not values.
This council has been great, and I'll have to say.
I won't speak to that particular decision. I will say that it was made under the, the guidance and the restrictions of the regulations that we have now.
Right.
What I will say is that the regulation is that we are seeking going forward, do the things that you've requested of us, do the things that y'all requested of us. That's what we're trying to do.
One other question, and I'll, we, we had a question there when we first started this, say we were going to say whether it was inside the jurisdiction or whether it was in the police jurisdiction. Is this going to be bordered inside the city limits lines? Are we falling under the police predictions?
Yeah, zoning is a, a ground authority that, that can only be enforced within the city limits. So we'll be confined.
I know one time there was a question there, whether it went outside the police jurisdiction. So it's just inside, okay?
I have a question.
Ma'am, she can try.
We live down below, I don't need it, we live down below Kells subdivision, and we have four acres, we have a mobile, mobile home up in that four acres. All that's around us, back this way toward Hamilton, is homes. Below us, out of the city limits, is mobile homes. We're on the cutoff of the mobile home in the city limit, we're the only one on that road. Does that mean we're not going to be able to replace it if it, something happened, or would we have to build? And would we ever be able to sell with a mobile home?
I don't know the specific location, but I can say if it is currently outside of an R4 district, then you would not be able to rebuild if something were to happen to your home. But the scenario, the situation that you're describing is one that, that, again, if you stand on a corner and you turn three hundred and sixty degrees and all that you see is compatible with manufactured housing, then that owner ought to have the protections of being in a zone where they can use their property by right for that use, for manufactured housing. The current ordinance doesn't do a good job of protecting that. It admittedly does a poor job of protecting that, and it's created a lot of conflicts. And me standing up there talking is not saying that this is the council's decision or that the mayor's told me to say this. I am synthesizing opinions that have been expressed to me over four years of working in administration. And David, I hope is about to say something against the ordinance.
How do they go about, in her, in her situation? How do they go about making sure that that becomes the way they would pull this new zone? What is going to be the process? Because we're.
Come back, it's time to wait. Come back, next, next, two weeks.
I'll be here.
Two weeks from now, we're going to have recommendations on zoning district counters. We're going to, and this is, I'm not trying to cut off any sort of discussion, but it's a discussion, been a discussion point for a minute.
I would like to say one thing regarding his question. If I were, now, I'm, I'm not in this situation. I actually live outside the city limits, but I have property in the city limits that I have not been able to use for what I want to do.
That other people were?
Yeah, that's getting into the politic thing, and we'll get into that later, I'll be back. But regarding his question a while ago, if I lived in the city limits and he was wanting to upgrade his home, I would be one hundred percent in favor of him upgrading that home than to leave that home there because he feels he's trapped and has no choice. And, and it, don't take what I'm saying the wrong way, but it delays the opponent, that it's unsightly, but yet you won't even replace it, not grade it.
You're on my side.
Yes. I'm on the side of people doing what they want.
Because I rented it out, they destroyed it. And it won't pay me to put any money into it anymore because it, they did a job on it, now it's, it's an eyesore, and it's on my property.
Yeah, I would like to bring it out. That's something that we've heard and haven't heard a whole lot of opposition against. It's a question of timing. Right now, the ordinance, ordinance forces a, a home to run down completely before it redevelops in a pattern that is conforming with the ordinance. If it's a manufactured home, single-family district requires a mobile home to just complete right away before it can even be sold, and then it has to develop in single-family. That actually is faster than allowing people to take them out and move them back in. Because if you can take them out and move them back in, then you perpetually take them out and move them back in, and that pattern's locked into place. I'm not saying that either one of those scenarios is right or wrong, but those are the kinds of questions that have to be decided eventually by the council. That, that being said, I've not heard anyone yet say that if it was an improvement to the community and its, its property values in a reasonable period of time, immediately in this case, that a decision that they were, that were opposed to do it.
The way it moves is you're forcing him to stay in this situation.
And if, if the consensus is, and the decision of the council is, that those rules are, are not serving the city, then we're going to change those rules.
We need something to encourage the people to upgrade. We need some kind of ordinance in writing that's going to encourage him to want to upgrade. If I were his neighbor, I would want him to upgrade a few more states. At the same time, we need something where we ain't got to go before a committee, as long as grandfathered in as a mobile home, as long as they're upgrading the value of the property, we need something in writing where it's black and white that's telling us that we can, because what you're doing, you're downgrading the value of property. If somebody lives in a mobile home, everybody can afford a house. Our average income people in Hamilton, Alabama, probably the big percentage of them is going to be in a thirty thousand dollar house or under. We don't need to be downgrading these people, we need to give them something that makes them feel good about what they got and want to upgrade. That's the way it is right now, we're saying, hey, if you don't do something better than what you've got right now, we don't want you. I mean, as long as they're trying to improve it, we need something in writing that's going to help them improve it.
And make everybody live in the same center room. Not special decisions made for special people.
There are, I, I think there's a consensus that there are neighborhoods that are primarily single-family, that have, currently have a manufactured home or several manufactured homes in them, that over a long period of time, it would be best, in the best interest of that neighborhood if they rebuilt as single-family housing. Those homes should be given nonconforming status. What I'm hearing is that there's a strong belief, and then we'll discuss this with the planning commission and the council, but there's a strong belief that even within those areas where they're nonconforming, that they should be able to upgrade. And, and that's, that's perfectly acceptable if that's the standard. But even above that, there are areas where they shouldn't be nonconforming, they shouldn't be grandfathered, they should just be there because it's an appropriate place for their people. And they don't have the hassle of going for a board or committee or, or worrying about whether the insurance or anything like that.
You have to consider one thing, that the mobile home business is what put this town together, and you're trying to shut it out.
together, and you're trying to shut it out.
My question is, that I thought the other, I was under the impression, I thought I'd read it in the paper, if you did not run it in the paper, did the other council not come back and say, if you put a mobile home back in where one was at, that as long as it was not over ten years old, you could replace a mobile home? Is that not what was said in, after this happened the last time, and we went through?
I believe.
Somewhere I read that, it was in the paper.
I'm not for sure, I'd have to look at it, but I think it was put in that, it could be upgraded with a minimum, I want to say maybe eight years, it could be over eight years.
Oh, no, over ten years old, yeah, over ten years old.
Correct.
Then you could upgrade it with another mobile home, is what it said.
It was trying to set bases, you know, you can have one that's two years old, it looks like.
Right, I mean.
You can have one twenty years old, it still looks good.
Mm-hmm, and you get out here and you can see a house that may not be ten years old, but it looks like a dump because it hadn't been took care of. So, I mean, it shouldn't be just because it's a mobile home, that it should be ready low-income. Anyplace can look like a dump and be low-income if it's not took care of.
Of course, I think it still had the need of standards of hundred penny.
Oh, yeah, it still has to do all that.
But I think there was an age limit, that it could be an older house taken out.
And that one that back end, it wasn't ten years old.
I think it was a good statement to say that if they're comparable in value, you know, whatever that is, then that'll be fine.
Yeah, the section one twenty-seven, section one twenty-seven of the existing ordinance addressing manufactured housing, it says that it shall not be located within the city unless it was constructed no more than eight years prior to the date of application, and it is underpinned, has hedges removed when possible, underpin them when they are not removed, and it has front and back porches, so that's, that's what the text of that amendment said.
What's the term of limitation on the porches?
I'm sorry?
What's the term of limitation on the porches? And I know it was put in two year ago, and ain't no porch has been built.
This was passed in June twentieth, two thousand and eleven. I think there was a gentleman back here.
Mine got answered.
Did we address your, mine got answered, okay. Got us all through them. But basically, the next steps are to continue an analysis of this map, taking the comments from this evening, and try to come up with some additional regulations that are tolerable, acceptable, hopefully good, hopefully address the concerns that y'all have, because I've been working here for four or five years with, I mean, I've been working in Hamilton in planning and zoning for about four years, in the region for six and a half, seven now, and your concerns are not uncommon, and the planning commission has heard them, and the council is receptive to them, and it's our job to get it done. Not every comment, not every desire for every property owner will be incorporated into the, into the regulations going forward, and not everyone will be fully satisfied with the product that comes out the other end, and that is guidance for the future in Hamilton. But the larger issues that we've discussed this evening, hopefully we can get some traction on, and we can come to some consensus as to what's appropriate for the city, because it really does come back down to having a set of regulations that are enforceable, that are understandable, and that reflects the general public opinion about what should be in place for the good of Hamilton going forward. I'll stick around for a few minutes and be glad to address any additional questions or Mr. Mayor.
Did I understand you to say there would be two more public hearings?
Yes, sir, yeah, and the dates of those are in two weeks and two weeks' follow-up on that.
Okay.
August twenty-sixth and September ninth. I hope that on the twenty-sixth, I turned my phone off so it didn't bother us, I hope that on the twenty-sixth we'll have some potential solutions, and a draft zoning map, and then on the twenty-ninth, oh, I'm sorry, the twenty-ninth, the ninth of September, we will actually have zoning that can become the foundation, or actually become the recommendation of the planning commission. Depending on how much controversy there is, how much additional question, conversation that we have to undertake to get it right, or to get it in a form that the planning commission is comfortable recommending to the council, that'll really set the stage for it. But our goal is to have this wrapped up September ninth with a set of recommendations from the planning commission. Yes, sir.
The city now is in the process of beautification. Should the, should the city ordinance put that in perspective as the surrounding, the surrounding areas, as what they call, upgrading, upgrading the city buildings and like mobile homes and stuff like that, or manufactured homes?
Yeah, the current ordinance has a landscaping and buffering provision that's just really difficult for the city to enforce. I think it's important for us to get the basic zoning districts in place, and to work with developers on beautification projects and other city grids, before trying to undertake a regulatory scheme for landscaping or for city beautification.
There's a lot of, excuse me, there's a lot of rental property in Hamilton, and ninety percent of it is, is mobile homes or manufactured homes. Ninety percent of them haven't been kept up. There's a lot of houses that's rental property. They haven't been kept up. If you drive through, if you drive through a community and it's nothing but solar, solar thump, this beautification part that Hamilton's going through and everything, are they going to be able to have these rental property owners to upgrade their property, to conform, conform with the area that they see them?
City beautification is one of those processes that involves different strands, strings, I would say, the zoning ordinance is one part of that, and it takes a long-term view of things, as these manufactured houses, for example, as they pull them out and move them back in, one of the improvements that was made recently to the ordinance that we have is this provision of the D L S A years old. That, that's not going to catch every mobile home that's an eyesore, that's not going to catch every house that may be less well-maintained than others, but it's a, it's a minimum standard for the city, and it forms a long-term minimum standard. There's some other things that the city can consider that are outside of our own zoning ordinance, such as property maintenance ordinances and things of that nature. But with respect to the zoning ordinance itself, what we're trying to do, I think, is to establish a, an enforceable minimum standard that's sort of a long-term perspective, but with the city beautification movement, so to speak, the tools and resources that the city has available to are multiple, and not just the zoning ordinance is part of that.
I guess what I was getting at, the surrounding areas of the area that's going to be beautified, you drive a city block or two city blocks, and who would want to live here? Look at this, building's falling down. There's a mobile home or a manufactured home, and it's grown up around it, grass that deep, but it's rental property. So, what, I guess what I'm getting at, is there, is there going to be any ordinance passed that these areas will have to modify and come up with a form for the surrounding areas?
I can say, I can only say that the ordinances that you have, your building code and your zoning ordinance are designed to do that in the long run, there are probably some other property maintenance requirements that could be placed on them, but as far as just requiring somebody to take down a lot and rebuild on that lot, outside of that property being condemned, there's really not much that the city can do to force somebody to redevelop the property. That doesn't mean that over a long period of time, that these tools, the zoning ordinance in particular, and the building code also can't guide, guide, yes, guide that development toward a more secure and compatible use, and that's around there.
In other words, in other words, the city has got to develop, they've got to develop a zoning ordinance, and say, for instance, like Birmingham, they're, they're tearing down, they're tearing down buildings left and right, they told how many thousands they had, they, they're going to have to tear down them, and ninety-five percent of them is real estate property, you know?
Yeah, and, and rental property is always difficult to regulate because of absentee landlord issues and things of that nature, but in general, yes, I think that there are three main tools that are available to cause property change into more attractive development over time. One is the zoning ordinance, which can create coherence in the type of use, all single-family, all business, mixed use in some areas, and over time, that ordinance will take effect and will have new development come in, in a use and a design, with setbacks and with street frontages that are amenable to that area. And then the second ordinance, or the second tool that's potentially available, is the nuisance and property abatement code, where something gets so, so far gone, or the grass gets so high, that the city can take action to have the property on, or take appropriate steps, or they can condemn the property and place a lien against it. And then the final thing I'd point to is your building code, which is intended to ensure that, not necessarily that it looks okay, but that it's structurally sound and safe. So those three, and I'm sure there are more out there that I'm unfamiliar with and can't come up with off the top of my head, but those three are really your strongest tools for the city to pursue higher quality development in certain areas.
We've probably had more cleaned up this year than Birmingham has for the size of our area. If you look around, I mean, you got to give the council a hand on that, I would name all five right now that they've had cleaned up, if you, I'm just saying this for the public, but if you have a problem with an area next door to you or something, if you call the council or the mayor, they'll, they'll might respond on it. They just tore this house down right here behind city hall, they just cleaned up those women's two buildings out here, they just cleaned up a house over here behind the Yamaha place, Karen Wheaton just tore one of her old buildings down. I mean, we got, you know, give the credit where you're, I think if we get behind them with the rightest funds, you'll see this council make a difference in Hamilton. I mean, I like what they've done, I didn't realize we had a new map, she just told me a while ago that we've done, changed this map and everything. Tammy had called me one night and told me to look at it, but, I mean, we need to get behind them and support them and help them with it, because that's what they're asking for. I mean, I think this is great, and, I mean, I think if the people, if the people get involved in it, I think they'll make the changes we need made.
But you can't step on an individual's rights to have something there.
No, but you can lead them into it, it's a lot easier to lead a horse to water than to.
You can't force him to upgrade.
Right, but you can, I mean, most people want to upgrade if they've got the right response. I feel like, I'm in the rental business, and I feel like I keep mine as nice as you keep your yard, and I ain't even seen it, but you can go to any rental house I got, and I take care of my rental property, because I respect my renters and I want good business. I don't put up with, but sometimes you get one that's bad. I tell any neighbor to any house I've got, if you got a problem, you call me and I'll respond. And the same way with the city, if I call them, they respond, if I ask them to haul off a lot of the gardens, they come get it.
Well, you're one, you're one in a million.
Well, help us face them over there.
They have some pretty hard heads.
They are, you're the happy little one.
They tell you, that's my property, I'll do as I please.
I'm not a animal.
Go.
We can do this all night. We've been here about forty-five minutes, we're going to be back in two weeks for the night, is that right, Dave?
Yes, sir.
And what's the topic then? We're going to talk about the map.
Yes, sir, we're going to talk about. Took the slide down and checked the ordinance. Okay. I'm going to try to review the ordinance provisions that we've come up to, come up with to address the issues that we've discussed tonight, and provide a set of draft recommendations for review, and then at the August twenty-sixth meeting, also, we're going to try to review the major recommendations in the ordinance, so that we're prepared on September ninth to have a recommendation potentially from the planning commission to move forward with adopting the ordinance.
So we'll be back in two weeks for the night, and before we close, I'm going to say thank y'all for coming. We've tried to be very transparent in doing this, we've made no secret about what we're trying to do. We want to make things simpler for Hamilton, just our zoning, so it fits us, what we have doesn't really fit Hamilton, and we want something that's going to fit our town and our people, and protect you and protect our citizens, and be something good for our town that's going to help us grow everybody's mind alike, you know, we're going to do the very best we can, and just be upfront, open, transparent with you, we haven't tried to hide nothing, this has been on the internet, it's been on TV several times, Ed's wrote two or three articles already promoting, so I appreciate that. So once again, come back in two weeks if you've got any more questions, we'll just keep on going till we get it right. Thank you.